Order, we all rise for a pledge to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Give the roll call attendance, please.
Here.
Yeah?
Here.
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 Here. Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from the September 21st meeting. If there's no questions or concerns, can we get a motion to accept the minutes? Okay, motion made by Paul. You know, you made second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is public hearing for Gasland Petroleum, Route 9D in Houstonville. This is for lot consolidation, site plan, and special use permit. Get a motion to open the public hearing.
Someone.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public hearings now open. Before we go too far here, let me just read a statement before. This is a public hearing for Gasland Petroleum. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments and important relevant information regarding this project. If it is not the function of the planning board to promote or oppose certain projects, if it complies with the appropriate sections of the zoning law, and if applicable, is consistent with all criteria set forth in the zoning law, the planning board has no authority to deny this application. After the applicant's professionals have made their presentations and described the project in its entirety, the hearing will be open for public comment. Those speaking must identify themselves and stately clear state clearly their name and address. All comments are to be directed to the planning board and not the applicant and/or applicant's professionals. For the sake of expediency, redundant comments will not be entertained but will be acknowledged as being already brought to the attention of the planning board. No crosstalk between the applicant and the public will be allowed during the public hearing, and the duration of each individual comment will be limited to three minutes. So we will now proceed with the applicant's professional.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean, attorneys for the applicant Gasland Petroleum. I'm joined tonight by our professional staff and our client. Behind me is our client Mitch Nezewat and Zedan Nezewat of Gasland Petroleum, and our design professionals Kyle Bardwell from Chasen and Phil Greeley from Mazer Consulting, our traffic engineer. Chris Lapine sends his apologies, but he's not able to be here tonight. The board is familiar with this application from its prior presentations. I will provide a brief overview for the benefit of the public and then ask our traffic engineer, Phil Greeley, to provide an overview of the traffic at the site because I know that's of concern to this board and the residents, and we want to provide a report on that. Gasland is proposing to develop a gas station with two apartments and four dispensers at 2361 Route 9D. The property is currently occupied by three residential homes, a garage, and a bar, which together accumulate approximately 5,300 square feet, and Gasland is seeking to provide a 2,700 square foot convenience store with two 1,300 square foot one-bedroom apartments on the second floor, as well as four dispensers, or 21 parking spaces. And Gasland is seeking site plan approval, a special use permit for the gas station, special use permit for the mixed use, the convenience store and the apartment, as well as lot line consolidation because we're combining four tax parcels into one. We conform in all respects with the special use permit requirements, and we'll go through those at a later point. We require one area variance from the side yard setback, and we are asking for a waiver to encroach into the front yard setback, still further setback than what buildings are along that area of a road, but not as much as the zoning requires, and that is a waiver granted by this planning board. Your board has declared itself to be lead agency. This is a public hearing, and at some point in the future, we would then go to the ZBA for the variance and come back to you for your determinations. We will be submitting a revised traffic report. We had previously issued a traffic report. Mr. Greeley, Dr. Greeley is going to explain the traffic in his report, his discussions with DOT, and then later this week, we'll be submitting a revised report to incorporate those comments. We're also exploring the designs to provide for hard prohibitions. As the board knows, this will be right turn in, right turn out only. We will not and are not proposing any longer that there be left turns in or out of a property. And we are also going to be looking at the project so that we can make sure it is a hard, either a channelized or a mountable curb to prohibit and restrict those left turns. The plans before you tonight show the signage that would be no left turns in or out, but it doesn't reflect hard prohibitions on it, and that's something that I know the board would like to see, and we're going to look at that and see how we can provide and address that issue. So at this point, what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Greeley to come up and address the board and explain to you his traffic report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Philip Greeley, Mazer Consulting. We prepared the traffic study for the site. The traffic study was originally done in January of this year. It was based on data that was collected in the fall of last year, of 2019, so prior to the pandemic. We had met with New York State DOT in late January, I think it was January 22nd, to discuss the access to and from the site, and at that time, due to the traffic conditions in the area, the volumes, and the proximity to the signalized intersection, we discussed access being limited to a right turn entry, right turn exit driveway to Route 9D, and the purpose would be to capture southbound or westbound traffic on 9D, and that would be the primary movements to and from the site. Now, after we met with DOT, we had revised the study. I just learned tonight that it was never resubmitted to the board. It has been submitted to DOT. It was revised in March of this year, and it reflects that right turn in, right turn out. In terms of this type of facility, you know, the traffic along 9D and in that area is over 17,000 vehicles a day passing this site, and in peak hours, you have somewhere between 13 to 15 or 1600 vehicles total both directions. So it's a heavy traffic corridor. This type of use does attract a lot of the trips from the roadway network. It's not necessarily a new traffic generator. Studies show as much as 80% of the trips are purely pass-by trips to a facility like this. When we do our analysis, New York State DOT only allows us to do approximately a 25% credit for that, so we have to assign to the roadway and the driveways to make sure that functions. As part of the discussions with DOT, we also talked about improvements to the signalized intersection of County Route 28 and 9D to upgrade the actuation, provide communication modems, and other equipment to improve the efficiency as much as possible at that intersection. So those details haven't been nailed down. It would be part of our highway work permit with New York State DOT. As Mr. Ward Willis has indicated, the site plan right now just shows right turn entry, right turn exit, based on signing controlling that. DOT will require positive control. What I mean, positive control, an island to reflect that. Typical for sites, we have several sites that we've done for this type of operation with channelization for right turn in, right turn out. It does have to accommodate the delivery vehicle, so many times, there will be mountable curb so when a delivery is made that it can function accessing the site. So where we are now process-wise are just the early stages with DOT permits. After we received your input, we had revised our study. As I indicated, that'll get submitted. I just found out this evening that it wasn't part of the last submission. The improvements at the signalized intersection will likely be, as I said, actuation and communication type improvements. There is not right of way to do additional lane widens at that intersection. The other components that will be addressed, we have to demonstrate the sight lines for entering and exiting vehicles, of course, and also in our study, we had identified all the accident history in the area at that intersection along this frontage, and the other thing that DOT had talked about was other measures such as new backplates on the signals to help with glare. So those will all be determined as part of our final permit. So I think that's just a quick synopsis, and unfortunately, you don't have the latest study. So I don't know whether you want any questions or just the rest of the presentation.
I mean, once you have the latest study completed, that will be turned over to us.
Yeah, it'll be submitted. Yeah, as I said, it should have been already resubmitted as part of the last package, but it will be submitted with the next submission.
All right. Yeah, because the sooner we get it, the better.
Yes.
We can have our professionals review it just to, you know, to move forward.
And I, just a quick question, and we don't, you know, in terms of, has the notice of lead agency been circulated to DOT? Because if it is, I would like to just get a copy to continue in our discussions with them, just so that everything in their files get in the appropriate files.
I believe it was.
Okay.
Correct?
Oh, well, I can just coordinate that with you.
Yeah, just coordinate to make sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Greeley. One thing I didn't do, which I'll do for the benefit of the public, is just ask Kyle to point out some of the highlights of the properties that we're all familiar with, the property we're talking about on Route 9D. I just, there's an entranceway on the bottom off of 9D, that's the ingress and egress coming off of 9D, and then you have the four fueling dispensers that provide eight positions where Kyle was showing. There is at the far back right, there's a turnaround for the gasoline tanker truck to safely come in, and there's a planned detail that provides a turning radius and turning movements that I know your professional staff has both got or will look at, that show the movement of the truck in and out of the site in a safe manner. There's also sufficient parking spaces that meets code, 21 spaces, including the island as indicated by Kyle. And finally, there is the building with the convenience store on the bottom and the two apartments on the top floor, and we've provided what we believe to be attractive architectural elements that your board has looked at with three alternatives, and we're obviously still engaging those discussions with you as to get some feedback from you as to the appropriate design within the hamlet for that building. And unless the board has any other questions, we're done with our application presentation at this point.
Does anybody, any board members have any questions?
Do you have separate parking for the apartments shown on that plan? Or they're not going to be parted at 22, are they?
They are included in the count as to whether they, how they would be designated. I'll have to get back to you with an answer on that. I'll speak to Mr. Lapine and get you that.
Okay. How many parking spots you plan on having for the apartments? Four?
The code requires three.
Three?
Yes.
So it's just one and a half per apartment?
Well, it's based upon the traffic count and the traffic generation, the traffic manual, so we have three provided, yes.
I don't see that as being sufficient, but, I mean, most families have two cars.
It's going to be a one-bedroom apartment.
That's all I know, but if he brings his wife in there, she needs a car. He needs a car. That's four cars.
Understood. We'll look at that.
Okay.
All right. Any other board members have any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, I guess we'll open up the, we'll open up the floor for public comment. Is gentleman there in a black jacket?
Good evening. Can you give me my address?
You just state your name and address for the record, please.
Calmine Rotundo, live at 13 Bowden Lane, in the town of Wapengers. I oppose having this gas station there for a variety of reasons. Number one, we have five gas stations within eight tenths of a mile from where we sit right today. I don't think we need any additional gasoline stations, especially on 9D. 9D is extremely heavily trafficked. It's an alternate route to Route 9, north and south to 84 to Newburgh or otherwise. Yeah, we don't have many school buses today on the road, and that's going to only get more traffic when we get back to school season, open it properly. I frequent that road, my family quite often, going back and forth to work, going to school, going shopping. The turn that they alluded to, if you've done any chance to see your graph, but I find it very hard to believe a tractor-trailer delivering gasoline can make a turn on that road so close to an intersection, too. It's not very far, I don't know how many feet it is off the intersection, but it's way too close, and I think you said one of the concerns I had was whether or not we can make a left-hand turn to the gasoline.
Yeah, and you're addressing the board.
Sorry.
You're addressing the board, not the applicant.
Thank you. One of the comments about them being a concrete island, I guess the DOT requires, makes a lot of sense, however, where is that, where is that road going to be coming from? There's very little shoulder, if any at all, today as we speak, so there's really not room for a concrete island. I just think it's a hazard to all of us in the community, and I think it's a bad, it's a bad move for us. Anywhere else would make sense, just too close to that intersection, and let alone another convenience store. I mean, how many more stores do we need in the community? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, yes, gentleman in the back. Yep.
My name's George Silvestri. Live at 87 Old Hope Road. I've been born and raised in Houstonville in the Hamlet, and like the gentleman's saying, we don't need another convenience store. We have two gas stations, a minute and a half each direction. They have quick marts in them, plus we have a convenience store already, and the traffic is horrendous in that intersection. Even as a kid, it's always been very bad there. We don't need any more traffic, and these tanker trucks getting in, I can't see it. I really can't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, woman over here on the side.
Good evening, I'm Karen Hagstrom from the firm formerly Stanger Roberts Davis &amp; Diamond, now Stanger Diamond &amp; Glass. I submitted a letter. I hope you all have that. One of our issues was that there was a link on your website that had expired, and the creator sets the link, so that would have been the Chasen Companies. Presumably, it most likely was a six-month link and expired prior to the publication of the notice of this hearing, and we think the public should be able to read all of the information about this application prior to commenting on it in order to engage in a meaningful comment. And I know in response to my letter, now we're learning that not only that traffic study that was part of that expired link, we couldn't access, and not only that, it was revised in March, I believe they said, and sent to DOT, and it hasn't been provided to this board or the public. So at the very least, I know you have opened the public hearing. I would request that you adjourn it so that the public has the chance to review a report that's been available for over six months from the applicant but not supplied to this board or the public. And why did the traffic report, which was missing, and I got to review over the weekend briefly, I haven't had enough time to really analyze it, but it said that traffic is not a problem at this intersection when common sense, and I believe a lot of the neighbors here would say it's a horrendous problem known to anybody who lives in this area, and DOT is obviously saying it's a problem. One of the things I pointed out in my letter, because we didn't have the benefit of this revised traffic report, is that there should be curbing, and now we're finding out DOT may be requiring that. But we need more information. We need to know what exactly on the plan, what are they going to do? The other major deficiency here is that this board is imbued with the power to do an architectural review, and I understand your comments at the beginning of the meeting that this board, if it's permitted, you, you know, you can allow the project, you're not here to make a decision whether you like or don't like something, but you do have the power under Section 24035 of your code to disapprove of architectural plans. And the applicant has utterly failed, which is spelled out somewhat in my letter, but it's also in your code, to address the, you know, this is a historical character-type neighborhood, and it's specifically defined that way in your code. The Hamlet mixed-use district is a historical, it has a historical character which is supposed to be preserved, and that's the intent of the district. The applicant has failed to meet that in all regards. The sign looks like a typical gas station sign. It doesn't conform. The materials are supposed to conform with materials of the structure and of the sign with the surrounding area. There's been no, the applicant has the burden of proof. There's been no evidence whatsoever that they've met any of these requirements. So I think we, there's just such a deficit of information, and there are so many holes here that this public hearing really needs to be put over for the applicant to address all of these things. And the parking is another issue. I believe there was one space designated for each apartment, which is not enough, as we all know. There should be at least two spaces. This is not even addressing all the environmental issues such as, you know, these are private wells that are in the neighborhood that is, are near here. It's a designated archaeological site, and the applicant, in response to your comment of they should define their hours, said our hours are 24/7. So there was not even an attempt to compromise, and that's, that's where they stand. And when are you going to deliver fuel? We prefer you do it at night, and they said we're going to deliver it whenever we feel like it. So I think a lot of these things need to be addressed, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
May I ask who is Ms. Hagstrom representing? I didn't hear her say that.
Would you raise your hand? Who I'm representing, or anybody?
You can say that on the record.
I can say on the record, yes, who I represent. I represent Frank Hasari, Rafiq Ahmad. I'm gonna, I'm sorry if I miss my names, but Sing Dalwil Amandip and S Dalwil Harpreet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, you raise your hand. You can come up to the mic, yes.
Hello, my name's Joe Edwards. I know most of you people, I've seen some of you before. I moved here in 1975, and I've run the convenience store there in Houstonville, and I sold it about eight years ago, nine years ago, and when I sold it, I asked the guy if I could have a part-time job as long as I wanted. He didn't know I was going to live another 20 years, I don't think, but anyways, I've been there ever since, and I opened the business up every morning for them, and I worked four or five hours a day. I'm almost 70 years old, so I don't want to work a whole lot. But the problem they're doing, what's happening here is just too much traffic. You know how many telephone poles I've seen broken over there over the last 46 years? Three at one time, one time. And many times, I've seen telephone poles broken because big trucks, cars, people can't get out of the way. Now, they build trucks now, pickup trucks, they've got 20-inch wheels, 10 inches wide, you just ride over the curbs. So these gentlemen say they're going to not make a left-hand turn there, they're going to make a left-hand turn if they're in a hurry. Okay, I know how the people do. I can't even have bushes up there because they break them and, break them and tear them down. Now, I know, we need some little curb appeal there, and we're going to do that, just so you know. I know her well. But anyways, you know, there is a tremendous traffic problem from 3:00 to 6:00, I mean, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning. I mean, people won't even dare pull in my lot going north. Won't even, won't even come in. They don't want to come in. And they say, Joe, I would stop more often if I could just get in and get out. That's what they tell me, you know. And again, at 3:00 to 6:00 in the evening, you have that same problem. Lined up traffic. How would you like to have a car parked in your front window all the time? And now, all those guys up and down that street there, live there, they have cars parked in the front of their yardhouses most of the time. I had people ask me to speak for them, the Democratic Committee, and she's going to speak probably later, different ones that just don't want to be there. I, for about four or five hours in between customers, I got over 100 names from local people that say they don't want this store, this gas station. Now, I didn't coach them into saying things, I just said, hey, I'm trying to get a thing. But let me just read you some of their responses, why they don't want it. This one lady here says it takes her five minutes sometime before she can get in the roadway out of her driveway. Another person says cars in front of her house most of the time. Person here that lives on the corner says unbelievable, he walks over to the store. He won't even get his car out. Mary and Mr. Morgan over on New Hamburg Road, okay, that's where the gas should be exited if it's going to be exited, can't even back out of their driveway. They have to go in on the grass, turn around, and come out frontwards. So and then, when they get an opening, they got to step on it. Now, I was talking to a lady just recently, she's about my age, I guess, and she says she's scared to come out of Marville Road because she has to wait for an opening, and then she's got to step on the gas, or her husband does, and they don't like doing that. She said, we like to enter the roadway at a normal speed, so we continue to wait. Sometimes it takes over five minutes to get an opening where she can do that. I had a guy here that says he can't even deliver the mail. Difficulty, people speeding, that's, I was there before it was a red light. No red lights, okay? I was happy when we got that first red light. He had red and green, that was it. Wasn't no turning lines, turning rights, turning left, this and all this, now it's a six-way light. If you hit there at the right spot, you can sit there five minutes before you can get through, because you got to this guy go right, this guy go left, this guy go right, and none of, it's got to be a dangerous intersection. The state has to think it because they have no right turns anywhere. You can't make a right turn there. You stop, even if there's no cars, you can't make a right turn or get a ticket. I know God did. I want you, I don't think that you're really realizing the danger of the, of the people have. Now, I wouldn't even go mention this if I am, because we have the post office there, and I heard that they was going to put the post office, maybe try to get the lease and put it in down there. If they do, then I get much, because we had 300 boxes, we're down to 100 because people can't get in there now. And if you move that post office, believe me, only 50 people may be gone, and it won't be long till you won't have the zip code of Houstonville, 12537, it'd be over with. I told you guys, the last time I was here, there was another donut shop or something that was being built, that more and more traffic, and it's hindering people. And I know, you've freaked when in our store and the post office, I seen you there. You know how hard it is to get in and out. It's nothing that's easy, you know. Now, let me see.
Well, instead of, instead of reading the whole list of.
I'm going to give it, I'll hand this off to you.
Give it to the secretary so that, you know.
I'm going to hand all this to you.
That way, if you, if you turn it to her, she will, she will get it and send it out to the rest of the.
This is about 125 people here I got in four hours.
You could, okay.
And I never found one person favorable in this situation. Not, not one person said, oh, I think we can even know the gas station. Okay, not one person. And I, you know, that's, that's.
No, no, we, we understand.
I want to tell you also.
But if, whatever you have, whatever information you have, because we've obviously gone beyond the three minutes already, I mean, it's.
Okay, well, I just got one thing.
Because if you're reading off everybody else's statements, you know, if we have the public coming in, they're just going to, you know, same, repeat the same things.
Let me just say this, closing. We do have 12 delis and six fueling stations within two miles, and I'm just asking this board if they would just slow down everything and look at the traffic problem. You know, make the traffic situation better, not more dangerous, and that's going to be making it more dangerous, okay?
Okay.
Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
I waited on you guys and some of your family I know, over the years.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else here? Woman, woman with a black mask, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Julie. My name is Julie King, and I live in 6 Cameron Lane, obviously Marvakers Falls. And I just think this is so crazy. I can't believe why we would want to put this place in this beautiful little hamlet, historic area. I think it's personal disagreement. I just want this money.
Please, just address, address the board, not the, not the public.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I mean, I just think it's out of greed. I mean, it's, like, we all discussed, everybody's saying it's dangerous. There's too much traffic. There's no benefit out of this at all. And that's my feeling, and I hope that this won't be approved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
Hi. My name is Petra Minell. I live on Tandine Avenue, which is about 200 feet away. I submitted a letter by email, and I'm going to give it to Bill later. 0.7 miles, less than that, in three directions is the next gas station. So I mean, basically what everybody has said, I'm mirroring that. We don't need one. I moved into this village more than 14 years ago to live in a village, in a true little village with a couple of stores. That mart that you're building is going to replace the existing Houstonville Mart, which we actually like. We go there, we walk there every weekend because of the traffic situation to pick up our mail. We go to the post office, what is going to happen to the post office? There's so many things that are hanging on this. And of course, the traffic situation. With traffic backed up regularly way past Myers Corners Road. Myers Corners is 3,000 feet away, way past that. So you're talking about about 4,000 feet of traffic at rush hour. I don't know how the board would, what is the word? You, I'm basically appealing to you to do the right thing and to say no to this, to say no to the variance and all of those issues that it would be causing people who live in this village. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody? Yeah. Come on up.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. I just agree with Joe and my neighbors.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Diane Damassie, 7 Cameron Lane, Wapengers Falls, 12590.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I just agree with everyone, the traffic's going to be more of a nightmare than it already is. Pretty much plan my day, my doctor visits, whatever I have to do, because I know what the traffic's going to be like on 9D. And I love to go to Houstonville Deli. And getting in and out there, if you go at the wrong time, nightmare. And there's almost always accidents, you know? Well, you have no control over it. People drive crazy, period, right? But I can't imagine truck, oh, sorry, gas trucks and all kinds of trucks going in and out there. It's just not going to be, not going to be good for us. You know, yeah. Traffic is really scary over there. Traffic, traffic and just people drive crazy, period. So more traffic's only going to make it more dangerous. And I love to go see Joe at the deli, but I can only do it certain times. I'm scared, quite frankly, to get in and out of the deli. We don't need another deli. We have one. I don't even think we need another gas station. Right? We have Valero's, I forget the name of the other one right now, right down the road. And we certainly don't need more traffic.
Okay. All right. We've got your comments.
But thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. The gentleman here.
My name is Rafiq Ahmed. My address is 2337 Route 9D, Wapengers Falls. Problem is, four MPDs, you're inviting eight cars to come in and go, plus the 2,700 square foot convenience store will bring like crazy traffic. I have few gas stations, and I know how it works. And this apartment, there's not enough parking there. And when you have a left turn from that 9D, a lot of people not going to follow that. You know, I know that. And I raise my three kids. We have a high school there. We have a school there on the left, right next to this gas station that's coming in. We have church, we have apartment complex. And I don't think we need one more. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
And we agree with Karen and everybody else. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear where you live. My name is Mr. Nash West from Gasland. The person just speak, he's my dealer. He own four delis and two gas stations, Main Street and Beacon. He lives in Long Island. I'm a lawsuit with him. And he's the one who's putting petitions at the cashiers that are at the deli and gas stations. Also, he contacted my other dealers, the Valero of the Road, which is prestigious name, and one of the, he's the one who hired the attorney, and Russell, registered him with the BP. Those three people who's paying the attorneys and knocking on the doors, and they hire an APR. And this person here is a liar. He lives in Long Island, and he have two gas station, Main Street and Poughkeepsie, and Beacon, and he has four delis. And he bring here the previous owner of the deli to lobby for three, four neighbors to confront your honorable board.
Okay. Anybody else? This woman in pink shirt in the back.
Good evening. I've lived in my home in Houstonville for almost 50 years. It's an established...
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Franca Petrillo. I live at Ten Apple Lane in Houstonville, New York, 12537. And I've lived in that established neighborhood for almost 50 years. And over the years, I have seen the progress that has been made to 9D, such as that wonderful traffic light. And I'm all about progress, but this is not a project that I feel is safe, and I would like to address the point of safety on this. Our neighborhood has never had town water, and several years ago, I had the expense of digging a well, and mostly everyone in my neighborhood has a well. And of course, you have to monitor for safety. A gas station so close to residences could cause an unsafe situation. We certainly do not need another convenience store when there is already one a block from the building site. And creating more traffic at that location is not feasible. On a daily basis, I'm unable to make a left nor a right turn to get out, out onto 9D. And almost daily, the traffic is backed up from the light on Old Hopo Road to the Middlebush Light, which it's got to be a quarter of a mile to a half a mile. And you've already heard about the numerous amount of gas stations that were within a half a mile to a mile of that location. 9D is also used to avoid traffic on Route 9, and it's used frequently to get to the train station. Numerous accidents have occurred in that area. And a couple of years ago, we had a storm, and Route 9 was not accessible. And 9D became the alternate route for people to get home. And even with that, the traffic, they were sitting in their cars for four hours. So I really feel from a safety point of view, we need an alternate route. And I don't believe there are any other major roads except for 9 and 9D. And although I understand that the purpose of the planning board is to guide growth and development in the community, it also has a responsibility to ensure public safety to the residents. This project would certainly not guarantee this. Having a 24,000-gallon fuel tank stored underground and gas fumes within feet of established residences does not ensure safety. A greater traffic issue due to an increased amount of vehicles, large truck deliveries, lines to get in to get gas, causing more backup and accidents, does not ensure safety. I don't understand the left turn where only a right turn could be made, because if you're traveling north, the only way to get into this establishment is to make a left. So are people going to drive to Middlebush Road so they can turn around and come around and make, get legally so they can go into the right? I don't know. Parking, I feel, would be an issue because having friends and family living in condos, they're assigned one parking spot or two. What about when they have guests? What about when they have gatherings? Where are all these people going to park? So I ask that you reconsider from a safety point of view, the approval of this project, and I thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. All right. Is there anyone else?
Can I just add one comment?
As long as it's not a redundant comment, you can come up.
It was an oversight, and someone brought up the traffic, the traffic being measured by the DOT. I don't recall seeing any type of device on the road that would have measured those vehicles, so I'm not sure if there's any alternate way to measure those vehicles. I've been, like I said, I've been here long enough, I would have seen them, I guess sometime late last fall or early, early last of this year. So I would ask if we're going to get DOT reports, we have some type of data that's measurable rather than survey based on their findings.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? This gentleman back.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenneth Wayne, 5 Marleville Road, Wapengers, 12590. My backyard is neighboring Mr. Conklin's property right now. So I would be directly affected by having this station there, personally as well as the whole hamlet lies. I can truly attest to that if I leave my property at certain hours of the morning, I am at my stop sign, which is normally blocked by two or three vehicles because they do not leave the side street unblocked, which is, I believe, an ordinance. If not, it should be. And it takes me sometimes 10 to 15 minutes to make either a right or a left turn out of my property, to go to work, to go to the store. When I come home, depending on the time of the day, I don't come through the village because I know I'll be stuck at Randolph School for who knows how long. I will come down, I will come home, I will either get off of Sheaf Road in Route 9, or come through the village and go down Creek Road and come up the back way. Which is not a true inconvenience, but it shouldn't be necessary. Also, I feel that, excuse me, I still call it the Dairy Mart, but it's now called the Houstonville Mart. And that's been an established business since I've lived there for 31 years, in my house. I don't see how putting another convenience store that close will help the community, or another gas station only half a mile from Valero, or another half a mile or 3/4 a mile down tonight to the, the Seco, down further south there. How we need another gas station right there. And when I, I work at Darby O'Gills in Hypeburg. They put a Dunkin' Donuts there that says, "No left turns, right turn only on the exit." If you want to make a left turn, you have to exit into the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, go to the traffic light, wait for the light to make a left. Obviously, working at Darby O'Gills, I would stop at this Dunkin' Donuts all the time. And you're stuck behind somebody waiting to make an illegal left turn, and you have to jump the curb too as well, because it's not a straight curb, but it goes out to directly to right. And like I say, my opinion probably is a drop in the bucket with everybody else. And should this thing go through and get built, then I have to worry about in-ground gas tanks probably less than 100 feet, maybe 150 feet from my well. I have to worry about, how is this thing slope graded for drainage? Am I going to get flooded out every time it rains? Am I going to have to watch, or having dinner on my back deck on a nice evening, have to sit there and smell, you know, an 8,000-gallon tanker filling up the in-ground tanks? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anyone else? The gentleman in the back, take him first.
I'd like to make it quick.
Please state your name and address for the record.
And complete. My name is James Wolensky. I reside at 2498 Route Interstate 9D. I've got cars going by my house at 50 miles an hour, and I'm three houses outside the village. I've already talked to the town about police department. We have nothing. We have one sheriff's department and one state trooper. That state trooper covers from Putnam County all the way up to Poughkeepsie. And that sheriff's deputy got to cover Wapengers, Hopewell, Fishkill. So we have no control, except maybe the Village of Wapengers Police that we were supposed to merge with, but we never did. Now, I worked at a gas station as a young man, and I used to see a lot of crazy traffic at the mobile station on Old Angels in '82. They've come up with better ways of controlling the fumes, all contained, yes, but they're still not safe. Now, in this town, Joe, who used to own the Dairy Mart, tried to get gas permits. He wasn't allowed to have it. Stewart's down the road wanted gas. They weren't allowed to have it. Because there's enough gas stations. Now, we're going to put in another one? This is crazy. We don't need it. We haven't had a gas shortage in a long time. Everybody's got plenty of fuel. My community is going to hell because you guys can't even slow down traffic. I come down from my driveway, and I live on the east side, so I have to cross traffic to go south. I've got cars flying up on me out of the village at over 40 in the 35 zone. They pass me solid yellow lines, or when they get to the Houstonville light, they get in the turning lane and go around me. Or if they want to get on Old Hopo Road, they don't go to the light, they cut through Dean Avenue at about 70. Is there anybody aware of this? Do they care for the people who live here? It's time to put a stop to this crap. We don't need another gas station, another accident. And my lord, the traffic on that road is always having accidents. I see the sheriff's department flying by, I see the state troopers flying by, and they're well over the speed. I often wonder when they get to the Middlebush Light, are they going to crash because they're going way too fast? We need traffic control. And it's not just one car. I like Mark Lieberman, I used to wave him on whenever he nailed people, but these people don't care. It's just a way to get from point A to B and trash everybody on the way. I slowed down one day, I turned into my driveway, and this guy got out of a car and wanted to start a fight. For the next week and a half, I'm cleaning broken glass off my driveway because they drive by and throw stuff out. I'll have a camera there soon. And then I just go see the judge. Because when I got a picture proof of someone doing it, why come to anybody but the judge? He can issue a warrant, have them arrested, but the town doesn't want to do anything. We have no police department, we have no security. We have a fire department. We've got a highway department. Those guys are working their tail off. But who's protecting us? They want to defund police? I think it's time we start funding. We need it. And they're coming up from the city by droves. I was told I could sell my house for a good profit now if I want, but you know what? I don't want to. It's a community, my grandparents owned that house. My grandparents lived there for, oh, let's see, 50s to 70s. Okay? Then I bought it out of their estate. And it's a struggle just trying to pay the taxes. Everybody know about that, right? But we don't need another gas station. It doesn't create jobs, it creates havoc. And I used to drive for Beacon City Schools, so when I got out at 5 o'clock, I'd sit down there by Castle Point crawling up Route 9D. And by the way, does anybody here know Chet Albertson? He's since passed, but he used to tell me that that was a cow path. 9D was nothing but a cow path where they ran the cattle into the village for the butchering. Are anybody aware of the history? The state came in and said, "This is now a public road." And what a mess they made out of it. We don't need another gas station. And if it does go through, I'm going to promise you this, there's going to be a lot of retribution in other ways, like at the ballot box. The people are not going to put up with this.
Okay. I think you're done now. Thank you.
I'm sorry about the buckshot, but someone's got to get a little hot.
Okay. Anybody else? Just Carrie, go ahead.
I'm Robyn Le...
I'm Robin Lecary. I live at 15 Red Hawk Hollow Road. According to the Town of Wappinger Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2010, there is strong consensus in the town that any future development of commercial land uses should be well-designed to fit in with the sites and should preserve and promote positive neighborhood district features so that community character is protected and enhanced. The Comprehensive Plan identified Houstonville as an existing center of activity and an important commercial center that can be enhanced and redesigned to promote community character in the town. Houstonville is zoned as a hamlet mixed use. According to the Town of Wappinger zoning code 240-7, "Hamlet mixed use intent, to preserve the historical character, concentrated development pattern, and mixture of uses in existing commercial hamlets, particularly Houstonville and Swartowville, by encouraging restoration, reuse, and visual improvements of existing structures." Concerns have been expressed regarding traffic flow and increasing congestion during peak hours at the intersection of Old Hopewell Road and with Route 9D, which leads people to seek alternative routes, resulting in higher levels of traffic and higher speeds that are appropriate for local roads. The Town of Wappinger residents frequently express their concern regarding excessive speeds on their local roads. So this just doesn't affect the people at that intersection. It affects the whole town. Because people will seek alternative routes, and they go too fast on local roads. The importance of the hamlet of Houstonville has been identified. It is a center of activity and an important commercial center. Although gas land has provided some aesthetic features to a gas station, it is still a 24-hour operating gas station with four gas pumps. There are gas stations and a convenience store nearby. Also, I think we need to be talking, thinking about our local businesses. If there's one, a convenience store that's been here for many, many years, obviously that's gonna affect their business. So, let's see. Okay, a gas station in the heart of this hamlet with four gas pumps that is open 24 hours a day with lights on, in a mixed-use hamlet that also has a heavily populated residential area, Marleville Road, Apple Lane, is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and is not consistent with the Town of Wappinger zoning code 240-7, "Hamlet mixed use." It does not preserve the historical or community character of this area and would be a disturbance to the residents of the neighborhood and decrease traffic flow. Also, gas tanks have a history of destroying land in the Town of Wappinger and should not be placed so close to residential wells. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, woman in the back.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Bryson. I live at 125 New Hamburg Road, right across the street from the Nesting Doll Shop, and right next door to this gas station, proposed gas station. At first, I must confess that I was happy to hear that someone was buying that property because we have a lot of issues with that property, ongoing noise from biker gangs that congregate there. But on reflection, and I guess I came to my senses, I realized that a gas station probably would not be a good replacement or an improvement. Who wants a gas station directly next door to your property? We've spent a lot of effort trying to make improvements to our property since owning it over the last 10 years. Our biggest concern, or one of our biggest concerns, is noise pollution. We already, over the 10 years, just have noticed so much excessive noise at the light in general. Everybody has their modified mufflers, and it seems to be getting worse. And I think with a gas station, those noises of the cars stopping to fill their fuel tanks and restarting will create probably quite a bit more noise. Deliveries from the tractor trailers. There are already a lot of these huge trucks driving by our house, and the use of their jake brakes. There's just so much noise in this little hamlet. I'm concerned about the light pollution, again, being right next door, and about our well, and everybody's wells in our neighborhood. We have poor drainage between these two properties, and I'm concerned about what will happen with any kind of spillage. We already have too many gas stations in the area. We have three gas stations within a mile, and eight gas stations within two miles. And I've never had to wait for gas, going to get gas at a local gas station. So there is really no need for another gas station. However, we definitely promote restoration and visual improvements to Houstonville. But why a gas station? I think a great idea would be restaurants and a store and on the first floor with apartments on top. Let's bring in a business that actually serves and enhances the local community. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the room? Yes, go ahead.
My name is Harper Dollywell. I live on half of Catchington Town Road. It's not right idea to have a gas station on the corner of the light. It's a lot of traffic. I commute every day, hour from my location. There's a lot of traffic on that place. And it's not good for the kids because the school bus is already getting delayed. Right now, it's a COVID-19. School is not open. Imagine when you're seeing the school. You think it's a good idea to put another light and a big gas station in there? I don't think so.
Can you just state your name and address again for the record? Name and address for the record.
7 Aaron Sue Drive. Aaron Sue Drive, yes, 7.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? The gentleman here in the sweatshirt.
Good evening, my name is John Riewalt. I live at, or my family lives at 119 New Hamburg Road. So our property is right on the back side. I don't know if that's the west side. You've heard from an awful lot of folks tonight with an awful lot of concerns that would obviously give us time to at least take pause and maybe slow the process down. But that's, that's not what I'm here to say. My quick question is, we're the lowest piece of property in that envelope around there. So when it gets wet, on a regular day, we get flooded out. We've got some situations there where we're wet. So, again, as a personal concern, that's all I'm addressing. The other folks had wonderful concerns that you guys are gonna have to address. But for what, what I need to do is just understand that drainage situation, because we're gonna get buried. If something doesn't go right there... So I thought it'd be prudent just to put, I don't know if it's putting you folks on notice or anybody on notice, but something on the record saying, "Please don't let us get flooded out if your drainage situation doesn't, you know, meet our needs." But thanks again for everything, you guys. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Okay, the gentleman in the black jacket.
Good evening, everyone. I live in, my name is Baljuzer S. Dollywell. I live on 31 G Alpon Drive, the condominium townhouses. Every time I go to work to make a left or turn, or a right turn, there's a lot of traffic already, the way it is and stuff. Especially my wife working in the city. She's working from home now. Every time I have to drop her off, it's already at least 20, 25 minutes. Sometimes she misses her train. So putting a gas station there, I don't think is a good idea. Getting more traffic here, I don't think is a good idea. Again, that's all I have to say and stuff. But thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no overcomments from the public, I would like to ask that you adjourn your meeting, the public hearing for two weeks, provide us an opportunity to provide responses to the comments raised tonight. We can provide comments on drainage, traffic, lights, architecture. What we can't provide comments on, and what you stated at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, is that you're bound by a set of laws, that there's too many gas stations, that the competition, clearly the competition doesn't want my clients there. That's not a comment we can respond to or that this board should be considering, because that's not what the law allows this board to consider. And the public knows that. Competition is really just trying to get people come here and say, "No, no, no." It's not a popularity contest. And I trust the board will take that into account when they consider comments. And I don't want to say there aren't legitimate comments. We will address those legitimate comments. But we're not here to say that because they got here before us, they can block everyone else out. That's not allowed by the law. You know that, they know that. They just want to drag this process out. And I hope you won't be a part of their plan. So we will provide responses to the legitimate comments. And we would ask that you adjourn it for two weeks, to give us that.
I was gonna say, how much time does your, how much time does the, your professionals need to reply back with some information to us? I'd like to set, I'd like to set a date, hopefully tonight, so that we have a date, a certain date, instead of just leaving it open, and we'd have to republish for the public to know what the date would be.
No, I agree. So we can provide you those by Friday. If you could then schedule a adjournment hearing to the 19th, I believe that would be...
Well, the 19th is probably not gonna work for us because we have another, another project that's gonna come here, which will probably draw a large crowd. Looks like it'd be the November the 2nd.
Okay.
Right? If that works for you.
It does, yes. And then we'll coordinate with your staff, the timing of the submissions, and make sure we get to everything in the submission time.
Okay, yeah, if you can get as much information to us as possible prior to the meeting, that'd be appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn this public hearing till November the 2nd. Motion's made? Motion made the 2nd, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Can we ask for a fatality report? Or make a fatality report within 100 feet of that property? Are we allowed to ask for that?
No, well, it's supposed to be done by the court.
They sent a memo around.
They don't, they don't look at that.
I know they don't, but I'd like to see them. Isn't that part of the traffic report?
Process.
I disagree with you, because I bet if we do look, then we will find out.
The DOT looks at that.
They would look into that. But is that something that they take into consideration? Because, I mean, they don't have to. They can report on all the different locations where there are a lot of fatalities. They allow situations to occur.
I'll find out.
And one other thing, too, the designs that they picked don't really meet the areas. Because the designs are a little different. Yeah, no, they have to be structured design.
All right, well, let's get, when we get the rest of the agenda done first, then we can have some discussion later. Actually, they're not even in here yet.
Probably got four or five people out there.
Huh? We gotta, we gotta have the changing of the, changing of the public. Before we can go any further here. We'll have to wait for, yeah.
Did they have to do a historical review on that site? They did? They did a dig there?
That was the, that was the meeting that they had with the historian prior to them coming with those elevations that they had delivered. So that was... That was...
Blue lighting.
Yeah, I think they met with Joey and then... They had come back after, in fact, gave us the pictures of the houses that they, they felt had historical significance within that community. And that's how they kind of blended that together to come up with the...
Hey, Al, how are you? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Hey, look at him.
We could rereview that at another, at another point in time.
Remember when we had that gas station situation where BJ's in?
Yeah.
And there was some concern about the water up there. We had to take that into consideration. If these tanks are that close to those wells, would they have to recapsulate them?
It's a DEC question.
If there is drinking wells within, there's not footage, that we have to take that into consideration. Leslie's gonna provide them with water.
Hopefully, engineer addresses that, the comments, so it's just more. Good evening, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see you all.
Hi, good to see you too.
My name is Albert Roberts. I represent Merrick LLC, the owner of the two parcels that are before you this evening. I personally negotiated the contracts of sale between Merrick and Plimpton Hills over the course of the COVID debacle. And I just have a couple of observations that may clarify some of the issues that were raised. First of all, both of these parcels were developed in the 70s and 80s. They, there were site plans on file and approved. In fact, the piece that Merrick is selling to Plimpton Hills was approved several times, and the comments about dimensional non-conforming are somewhat inappropriate because they are pre-existing non-conforming. And when the buildings were originally put up, they did conform to the then-existing town code. I believe Barbara Roberti was able to secure some of these original approvals, and that would probably simplify the planner's review and the engineer's review of these projects. We also have information that I just found out tonight, that the piece that's being sold to Plimpton Hills is probably not in the wetland. We had surveys done, and there should have been a map of amendment to the wetlands and flood plains. Unfortunately, it was never completed. And to exacerbate matters, the surveyor who did the project has recently passed away. But we should be able to provide this information to the satisfaction of both the engineer and the town planner. As far as the documents are concerned, the attorney for Plimpton Hills and I have already drafted documents, at least the format of them. And we are awaiting approval from your board so that we can finalize the legal descriptions. So I will get the documents that the other attorney and I have agreed upon. It was part of the contract, so that should simplify all review of the documents. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Christian Pajee, and I thank you for your attention. And I hope it's less controversial than the previous application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Christian Pajee, civil engineer, on behalf of the applicant. It's good to see everybody. I'm not sure what the best way to do this is. Should I take the microphone over to the plan, or?
If you, if you need to, there's another microphone over there for you to...
Can you hear me? Okay, good. All right, so the, there's actually three applications before the board this evening. One for a lot line realignment, and then two separate site plan applications. The, as Mr. Roberts explained, the one application is for Nissan, the existing Nissan dealership here. To the south is the existing certified used car dealership, which is now proposed as a plumbing and HVAC supply and showroom. So there, the lot line realignment is proposed to allow some of the parking to remain associated with the Nissan dealership. And there will be also several easements along with that to allow access in between these two properties. One, so Nissan can access this parking lot. Then also, another mutual easement allowing delivery trucks to circulate... to circulate through the, what will be the HVAC and plumbing supply, um, out of the, the, a docking and, uh, pickup area, delivery zone, and out to Sergeant Plummer, your way. Um, there are several modifications to the plant, to the site on the, uh, the southerly property. Um, one being, let's see. I'm going to flip this. Hold on. Okay. One being a proposed nearly 4,000 square foot addition, um, which will provide a loading dock and, uh, storage area, uh, for the new HVAC and plumbing store. Um, there are also some modifications within the parking lot itself to just accommodate circulation through the site for these, uh, delivery, delivery trucks to the loading dock, and also just to provide additional landscaping. Um, we're providing several landscape islands to break up some of the existing parking areas. Um, so these are all shown on the demo and the demolition, uh, demolition plant and the proposed site plant, um, where we're adding a lot of these, uh, these landscape islands. Um, there's also several areas of, um, display, display areas where there's, uh, concrete pads out in front, where they were previously showing, uh, some of the used cars. Those are being proposed to be, uh, to be removed, um, along with the lighting. Uh, there's, there's also some light poles that are shown, uh, existing light poles that will, will be removed. They're shown on the site plan, but there's several light poles that were, uh, used to just light the display areas, and those will be removed. Um, and we'll show that on the next, the next plan. Um, the, the use of the building, um, it's slightly less intensive a use as far as employees. Um, currently, the used dealership, uh, has around 15 employees. Um, the proposed use will have around 10 employees. Um, so water usage and sewer, um, will be, uh, reduced. Um, as far as impervious area, due to the elimination of some of the parking areas and creating these landscape areas, even with the, uh, the proposed addition, we're actually slightly reducing, uh, the impervious area on the site. That's really, that's really it. We did receive the comments from the planner and the town engineer regarding setbacks and, um, stormwater management, and we have no, we, we take real no, no issue with most of those comments. Some of the, uh, comments regarding zoning and the setbacks, uh, as Mr. Roberts explained, we believe, uh, should be addressed with the approved site plan approval, um, that's on record with the town that we're, um, we believe that we'll be able to, to get. Um, so that's just a broad overview. Um, so I'll open up to any questions, unless Mr. Roberts, like I forgot anything.
Um, anybody want to, anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. We had discussed earlier that maybe a southbound exit onto Route 9 would be feasible?
Like one in, one out? Southbound in and out? I think we're talking about that. Yeah, one, yeah, making that both, so you can, you can access. So you're only able to access onto, off of Route 9 into the site currently?
Correct.
They were just saying to add an exiting lane also, to alleviate some of the traffic that's going through the, the Sergeant Plummer area.
So that was, that's, that wasn't, that's not part of the proposal, obviously. Um, I don't think that this is going to generate any, any more traffic than what would have been already been seen.
Not trying to generate more, we want to make it more feasible for cars to go south instead of going on the back road. So it's something we'd like to see.
So that's, that's something that we could bring up? I mean, that, that's a question for the DOT also, we'd need a DOT.
It's a question for the DOT, but it's something that we'd like to see.
Okay.
Also, we'd like to see a landscape design also.
Well, we could provide that also, no problem.
And then for both sites, we'd like to see something on the lighting. Because, you know, we do have a new lighting code.
Well, we're working on a new lighting code.
Well, we're working on it. But we're still going to abide by the code we're working on.
Absolutely. So we'll, this is just a preliminary plan, so we'll need to work out all the details with stormwater management. Um, this is the plan that we believe is, is a viable, uh, site plan. Um, we know that we have to provide construction details on all the stormwater. We have to provide the backup, the engineers' report for stormwater. We have to do photometric plan for all proposed lighting, landscaping, all of that. We'll provide all those details.
Okay. And where's the loading dock going to be on this new, um?
So the loading dock is proposed at the north side of the building. Um, there's three stalls for the trucks. Um, it's this gray shaded area where the, the building is. This, this area will be, um, excavated out, will create a depression there to allow the, allow a loading dock, so that area will be lowered four feet to allow, um, box trucks and an occasional, um, uh.
So the, so that doesn't, so the overhead doors is an issue on Route 9? So they're not going to be facing Route 9?
The doors, as proposed, will be facing Route 9. They will be.
That's, that's going to be considered the front of the building then, at that point, the Route 9 side. So that's where the, the company's going to make their presentation. Um, the elevation that we have shows it on the, so shows it on that, that elevation, correct? So when people drive down, they're going to see the building, plus they're going to see the, the loading dock and everything that usually goes along with it.
Because the, the overhead doors aren't supposed to be viewed on Route 9.
Yeah, so there's, there's reasons why we are proposing the loading dock where it is, and a lot of it has to do with the internals of the building and how it's laid out currently. Um, the applicant would much rather have it to the south for a variety of reasons, but it's just not feasible for them based on the, the layout of the building.
Can they block it with some type of greenage, so that it's not viewed?
That's something that we could certainly look at. I'll, I'll hand it off to Brandon with Maury Architect. He's, uh, got a much better handle on the reasons why we're proposing it where, where it is.
Thanks, Christian. Good evening. Um, yes, they're very valid points. Um, so one of the reasons that we've approached it to, the design on the north side, um, which obviously, because our property line is here, sort of forces us to put the doors towards Route 9. Um, but you will notice that it's not parallel with Route 9. So coming northbound, they'll be completely blocked. However, you are correct, on the southbound, they will be visible. But what we did is we actually pushed to face back. So our elevation is a little misleading in its representation, because it doesn't truly show depth. Thanks, Christian. So when you have your front facade, this is almost 40 feet beyond it. So, um, I think that we could probably landscape some in that front buffer to obscure a lot of that. And the reason this happened, and the front elevation really tells a story, is this is the existing, uh, showroom for the car dealership. So this is really two different operations, even though it's one business. One is a showroom, and the other is the contractor's storage warehouse, supply house. This one, we're really encouraging the, the regular consumer to come into. This obviously is more contractor side. This is already set up as a showroom. To put the loading docks on this side, what isn't very feasible, because we've already got the glass, the openings and the entrances, and that's why we have them on this end. That's why we kind of came up with the angle and kind of placed it to the back.
But you'll be able to hide them with some type of shrubbery or something?
I think that, I, I think the owner would be open. So the, the question is, is because we have the loading docks kind of facing a direction towards Route 9, could we come up with some landscaping to help obscure that? And I think the owner is obviously open to doing that.
Are you going to show any other design other than that front of the building? Are you going to do anything to improve the building?
To the back, to the rear.
To the back.
Actually, to the, to the front structure? Or is it going to be just that same slim line that it's always been?
The rear of the structure, we don't have any current proposals for.
I mean, the, the front is what I'm looking at, the one that's going to be facing Route 9.
This front, we are going to maintain the same look, so it's the same painted CMU, same red Mansard. Absolutely.
My name's Calvin Hills, chairman of the company. Was started by my grandfather in 1902, so it's 118 years old. My son is president now. It's always been in the family. Um, we are proud how we do in the town. They are always happy to have us. Our ending product is always attractive, for a lot of reasons. We like it, and it's better for business, first of all. Second of all, that'll be a Kohler showroom. Kohler is very particular about where they have their name put and what they have put on. And we're very close to them, and we do it so it's attractive. We don't try to make it, uh, an eyesore. We'll, we'll do, we probably will leave the red, because our color is red, but the other part will be some beige or something very, uh, fitting for the, for the area. So we will work hard at, at doing what you want us to do. And you'll let, when you say our end product, you'll be happy. You'll see, we've done it everywhere else. We have two buildings going right now. One in, uh, Guilford, Connecticut, on Route 1, and a second one in Danbury. Um, I don't know the, one of the major routes there. We're in Danbury now, but we're moving. So I just want you to know what, what we're like as a company and how we've done this for 118 years. We, we, we don't cut corners, we do a good job.
Okay.
And our, and our contractors love us. And the only reason we're here is because your plumbers have told us they need someone like us. We're already selling in this area, and only for one reason. They need what we have, and we need what they, what they want to buy. So, um, if you have any questions, I'm here, I'd be glad to answer anything you have. Thank you.
You're going to give us a full color rendering of what whole?
I'm sorry.
You're going to give us a full color rendering of what the front's going to look like?
Yes, that, 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 we'll, we'll, we'll end up with, with, uh. What you're, what you're saying. And the, the dock on the north side, the sewer is off the south end. That's where our bathrooms are. That's where, it, it would change the whole, it would be a huge deal to pump it from the other direction down. The south end is always favorable, you know, it, just in the winter, it's favorable. But we can make it work, and we'll, we'll, we'll make that so it's not an eyesore of the doors, you know, come in. We'll, we'll put some kind of islands in there. And the truck comes in and goes along, and then backs in. We, we have some requirements just to get a big truck in.
Correct.
We're not going to have a lot of trucks. We deliver, we deliver, our trucks are working now. They'll work until midnight, loading trucks. They'll be gone very early in the morning. And so every single store gets a delivery first thing in the morning. So the plumber's waiting, he gets it, it's there. So when we have a big truck come in, it's because we have an order that's special. It's not, we don't have big trailer trucks all the time. That's not, not what our business is type. But there are occasions when we have to, you know, come in with a whole truckload from a manufacturer.
Okay.
Any other?
Not yet.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so, um, this is more towards, um, to, um, Brandon, the, uh, when future submissions will include all four sides of elevations?
Yeah, if that, if the board, if the board requires that, we can.
Yeah, we do. We require all, you know, so we get all four sides. That way, we get a general idea of what it, you know, what it's going to look like, what to expect, um, once it's built out. So if anything's being proposed or, or not, just so we know for our records.
Yeah.
So there's never any surprises. Okay.
Are you supposed to say one other thing? Um, the parking, you mentioned you'd like to cut down the parking. Part of our job, we sell plumbing, but a great majority of our business is warm air, heat and air conditioning, and wet heat boilers. And you all know, they're, every year is more efficient than the last year, which is wonderful for the homeowner, but for the contractor, they have to have training. So we run training programs all the time at night, and we need parking for them when they, when they all come in. And hopefully, we get a good turnout, and we always do, because we, there, there are good trainings. And we will probably, you certify some of your contractors, and they have to update their certification. And we have people on staff who have the authority from the state of Connecticut to do that. And we would do the same in New York. We would get someone certified to come in and train our contractors, so they can be, uh, up to date on all their newest products in, in compliance with their license. But the important thing is, is that we have the capacity parked these people when they come in. It's usually at night, and they come in and, uh, have these seminars. But we have them during the day, too. It's all over. Plus, we do have seminars on new plumbing products, but it's not as popular as the high-efficiency boilers for both heating and cooling.
Yeah, just one other question I do have, um, regarding the site plan. Was there going to be any proposed outdoor storage?
So that is something that we have discussed, and it's, we haven't fleshed out the details, but it is something that we wanted to present to the board to see what your feeling was on that idea. Um, speaking with Mr. Hills, what he's really looking for as far as outdoor storage is long pipe lengths, things like that. We're very willing to screen them, if that's something that the, the board would entertain.
Can you show us those on the next?
We, we absolutely will, but we didn't, we wanted to have this discussion a little bit to see if he'd even entertain it before we kind of came up with a proposal.
Well, I think it's a necessity that you're going to need it, but you're going to have to show it.
Very good.
And definitely screen, yeah.
Yeah, no, and I think that's, that's obviously a great idea.
Yeah, just as long as it looks presentable, so it's, you know, it's not just a bunch of things laying outside and.
Right, no.
People driving by and, you know, kind of get the wrong impression of it, so.
No, it's on, right, it's right on Route 9, and I just, you can hear from his presentation. That's not the look that he wants in front of his showroom. So we'll absolutely screen them properly.
Okay. All right, I think, um.
Pete, Bruce, I got a couple.
Yeah, I know, I was, I was just going to say, so leave it. I'll turn it over to the engineer and see, he's got a few questions.
Um, as far as, uh, the outdoor, um, outdoor storage, it would seem like the, um, south end of the building with the, uh, expanse of, you know, the parking area there would be, you know, a good place to have an area for contractors to come in and pick up. Uh, so that's probably an area that can be looked at. I don't think that the board is looking to have any kind of, uh, storage area now. I don't think that you are either, anything out, out in the front. So I think that, you know, the south side of the building is a good, is a good, uh, you know, area for that.
Yeah, without looking into it too much, I don't disagree at all, so.
So I, I think we need to be clear as far as, uh, the lighting. So, uh, Ralph, I think that we talked about that, well, Ralph and the rest of the planning board, that the planning board is looking to, um, I guess specifically for this site, um, reduce, reduce the.
Reduce the lighting.
Lighting that's out there like now. I mean, it's fairly like excessive for, you know, the car dealership, uh, but for this application. So I think, I don't want to go put any, um, any words in your mouth, but I think that that's what, you know, you're looking at, right? Reducing.
For both sites.
Yeah.
Both sites?
Both sites.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they get direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because the both sites are on board.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't want to speak for the other site, um, but they're not really proposing any changes to their property.
Changing the lot line.
They are changing the lot line.
Yeah, that opens it up, they got to come up with a light plan.
It does, it does put them in front of the board, absolutely. Um, but I just, if, I would ask that the board consider that they're really not looking to change their facility or the use of it in any way. Obviously, we will do everything on Mr. Hill's property to, just like you said, getting rid of the light right there on Route 9.
We just want to tone it down.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, we have to set a standard, and, and somewhere it's got to start. We've been working on it, and we just can't let it go. Once we start it, now we got to keep going with it. So unfortunately, you know, you guys opened up the door, and this is all part of it.
I, I don't disagree with you. I just, uh, trying to meet into the new standard and, and existing, you know.
I understand that.
Just to take that into account when we review it, that's all I would ask.
Alright, and the other thing, we did talk about the backside of the building. I don't, I mean, is the planning board looking to see something for the rear of the building, how it's gonna be improved or do you have any thoughts on it?
I personally, I drove around the site and, you know, it's overgrown back there, it's, it's not very nice, it's obviously been a little bit ignored. So, I think we can look at possibly cleaning it up a little bit. I'm not sure how much we would do to the building besides possibly, excuse me, you know, patching and prepping and preparing and cleaning it up. But I think there is room for improvement back there because it does look awful.
Well, you got a lot of traffic travels that back road.
Right.
You know, so you want all sides to look nice.
Yep.
So, it'd be only your benefit to make it, enhance it.
And that's something I'll, I'll discuss with the owner, absolutely.
Sure.
The other thing is, I think there were some questions from the planner in terms of whether the trucks could make the turn within that access easement there or the driveway access easement. Whether they can properly make that turn into the, you know, the parking lot and get into the loading area. So, if maybe, I don't know if the planner asked for a?
We're gonna provide a circulation plan, yep.
But you need to look at that, I think that the radius is a little tight, especially if you're gonna get a tractor trailer in there. I know that, you know, they're not gonna be many supposedly, but?
I know, we looked at it, I, I just can't recall if we used the tractor trailer design vehicle because we were proposing some modifications to the curb there and that was to accommodate that maneuver.
Yep.
So, we'll provide that though. We'll provide a, a plan showing the circulation throughout the site.
Correct me if I was wrong, I know, I know this is labeled as an access easement, but I don't believe our intent was for the tractor trailers to come through this.
Yes, it was.
They would be going out that way.
Yeah, they would have to.
In, in and out.
In and out, yeah.
Oh, they're going in and out this direction? Okay, I, I apologize. I, I was under the impression that we were coming in off of Route nine and making the movement forward and then back.
That's changed, I would check with the owner, that's not what I?
We'll review that.
I think that the majority of the trailers will come in here. We go around, go in here, go back in. This is an access, a right away, just so we have a right of, that, that's not gonna be our regular drive. Our signage or, or arrows or whatever we're allowed to put in will be here for the trucks to come, obviously, from the south mutually and, and come in this way and then back in. That's, that's pretty much what we, what we thought was the best, we're using that north, north end.
So, you would want, you would want those trucks to come in on the south and then, you know, maneuver through the parking lot in the front to get the? I mean?
It seems awkward, but it isn't because?
If they come in early in the morning, like you say, then that's probably not an issue.
No, it's, they, they come in and, you know, they're not gonna be that many, first of all. We, we don't take full loads to branches right off. But maybe at the beginning of the heating, air conditioning season, we'll have a load of air conditioner. But then, we'll fill in from our main warehouse, so it's, it's not common. But, I don't think there's a problem because we specified that when they designed us, that we have enough, that we've had other areas, that other branches when we, when we build on them, the dock has to be correct and be able to take the big trucks. And one of the reasons for this addition here is that you see a dark gray. And that, that is to allow us to store things inside that we would normally store outside. That was the purpose of that. We have to have it for the dock anyway, so we'd like it to be a little bigger so we can put some, for instance, you're familiar with pipe, it's twenty feet long, you know? It's hard to put in a building unless it's built to put it in, you know? This way, we can have the forklift pick up the whole load and store. So, that's, that was the idea of putting the addition along with the dock which we helped to build anyway.
Okay. So, if you really are gonna think about using the southerly access as, let's just say, as your main truck?
Absolutely.
Access, you're gonna have to go and look at that, 'cause, you know, there's probably gonna need to be some radius, you know, changes on that.
Well, I think when you, he watched that very carefully.
Alright, well?
That's what I'm under your pressure.
And then, Christian, water and sewer are definitely separate for each site?
Yes. The, the Nissan site, I believe, is operating off of an onsite septic system.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
And the, the southerly parcel is hooked up to the town sewer.
That's what I thought too, looking at, you know, parcel access.
And they each have their own private well.
Oh, yeah, there's the sewer line, yeah.
Can I address that? We have an application, we were to extend sewer to the Nissan site. I'm meeting with Jim and Rand this week sometime, start putting the heat test together. Water is not available, town water is not available.
Right. Okay. That was it for now.
So, I agree, Mr. Roberts, with your assertion of the non-conforming use. I think the only issuer question is on your plan, it appears that the relocation of that small parking lot to Site one is gonna create a greater non-conforming dimensional with the impervious surface. So, your plan shows that the maximum is eighty-seven thousand square feet and the proposed is now gonna be eighty-eight thousand square feet. I think it has to do with the relocation of the parking lot onto Site one.
That's all existing.
Right, but your, but your Site one now is, you're increasing the non-conforming on your Site one by increasing the, the impervious parking.
How could it be increasing the?
Because you're transferring it from Lot two to Lot one. So, you're, you're, you're taking a impervious parking lot from Lot two, adding it to Lot one, now increasing the percentage of impervious parking on Lot one. So, I think then?
I can't speak with the numbers, but we're just relocating what's currently being used to accommodate both properties.
Right, but what you're doing is you're increasing the non-conforming to Lot one by the relocation of, of that parking lot. You're increasing the impervious area of Lot one. Where the maximum is eighty-seven thousand square feet. Well, I'm, I'm not asking for, you know, anything today, I'm just, I think, bringing it to your attention.
It's just somewhere else to look at.
And also, just a very minor one too, but also the minimum landscaped open space is increasing by point four percent, which is an increase in the non-conformity.
Well, I think that could be addressed.
Yeah.
I think, I think the impervious is also point five percent too, so I think we could modify it to try to make sure that we're beneath threshold.
But I think the rest of the dimensional issues are, are fine because they're, they're lower.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're, like you said, point four, point five percent, so.
Yeah.
And just to address the lighting issue on the Nissan side, I believe the frontage? The frontage on, on Route nine on the Nissan side is approximately two hundred and fifty feet on Route nine. There's one, two, three light poles there and one in the middle of the lot, which is a minimum of lighting right now. If you go past just the Nissan part, basically, it's, it's underlit. This is way lit up. And these lights go out in the front at eight o'clock at night. So, you know, we need that, need that in the winter to, you know, for, we can't light, we can't lessen the amount of light or take out a pole there. The light would be dark. And you would not be able to, you know, show people cars. And it just leaves the work. We've got cars, wheels stolen from the front with the lights on the way they are. So, you know, reducing the lighting, lighting is a minimal here, that's one to bring out to your attention.
That's fine, we'll look at. Was there a specific concern with the lighting on that, that lot? Just only because we haven't done an analysis or anything like that of that lot relative to lighting, assuming that it wasn't gonna need to be addressed. So, we could certainly do, do that and provide some information on the existing lighting, if that's?
We'd like to see some information on the lighting.
Yeah.
Before we go through the time to just do an overhaul of the entire?
Yeah.
Before we go through the time to do an overhaul of the entire lighting system there?
Sometimes maybe it's just an adjustment on the top of a lamp or something.
Okay.
You know, it's not gonna be as bad as you think it is, but I think we'd like to see it.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was anything specific that was a concern of the boards that was kinda raising this issue?
I mean, I mean, it is bright for what, you know?
Just in general?
Just in general, but I mean, I understand there's not a lot of residential in that area either, but, just, you know, the code does say that no more than, you know, half a foot handle is supposed to leave the property. That's what's currently in the zoning code.
Okay. So, if you take that at the property edge and check that and check underneath the lamps, those are things we wanna know about.
Okay. So, so if we were to come back with just information on what the current lighting situation is?
If there's any adjustment, we feel we're gonna let you know about it.
Because I was saying, I mean, we have to look at it as two separate sites now. You have the Nissan site, which there's really not a lot of proposed work, you know, which we understand. And you have the, you know, the other site, the Pembent Hill site. You know, that one, obviously, you're gonna take lighting away 'cause, you know, you, you picked up on the note, on the, on those lights that are out in front right now, which kinda, you know, shine on the cars that sit on those pads. But if you, just give us an analysis of both of them. You know, trying to keep, just trying to keep it to a, you know, not a minimum, but, you know, to a reasonable level. Just so that, you know, people aren't blinded coming down Route nine. You know, it's not shining in their face to that aspect, you know, something that, in a reasonable levels.
Okay.
Okay. One other thing I, I just wanted to take a quick note of that nobody brought up was a dumpster enclosure on the site?
Yeah, they do have one.
Yeah, it's located between the?
By the loading dock, right?
Yeah, this is the existing. It's located between the loading dock, which is here, we have sort of a retaining wall, obviously, 'cause the loading dock pitches down. So, between that retaining wall and there was a little unique shape that we could use and we can also, obviously, we can get our?
Is that, is that area gonna be big enough? I mean, do you have anything to take care of the cardboard? Is there some kind of a cr, or like a baler or something like that? Or what do you do with all, you know, the cardboard that these units come in?
So, how large is your typical, at your other facilities, Mr. Hills? How large is your dumpster enclosures or your refuse needs?
In our main store, in our main store, we'll have a cardboard container. In our branches, unless it's a very big one, we tend not to, we don't have enough cardboard. Most of the boxes, first of all, a lot of our materials go out in, in the box, in the cardboard box, so they buy a box plant. But, we can do that, we can store advantage if, if there's enough use. But a cardboard company that buys cardboard, takes cardboard with it, they want some volume before they put a dumpster in there, as you know, so.
Right.
Probably, probably is insufficient. I'm not saying, I'm bothered that it's light, I'm not sure, but it's, it's not a problem. But I can, I can do research and do most of it.
As long as it's just sized properly.
Just make sure that you have the right size, that's all.
If you need that enclosure for?
Comes into our plan, the big boxes, then there's little boxes. The little boxes will then ship mostly to the branch.
We're just hoping that, you know, if we're gonna design it, if it's gonna be designed for the two, you know, for refuse and, and recyclables, that you design it for, you know, for two, you know, as opposed to there being one, one dumpster. I see, okay. That's all, we just wanna make sure it's sized right for that, and then that would be the best location for it. Okay. Okay? Thank you. So, they just review that and that should also be included on the cemental with a, you know, a detail on the enclosure. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, currently it's sized for, I'm not sure what the yardage is, but it looks like it's a typical dumpster and it also has additional room for what looks like they could do some recycling containers, so. But, you know, now that we mentioned possible outdoor stores, we may be relocating that in some area there. So, you know, since we'll be building other, you know, enclosures and, and shielding.
Okay. Alright. Ask you a question, did either of you speak to the planner today at all?
I have not.
No? Okay, I'm sure. Did you have any questions regarding his letter at all that needed to be addressed?
I don't believe so, but would we be authorized to contact them directly?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, if you wish, just contact David Stolman, he can go through it with you.
Clarinet?
Circulate. They'll circulate?
Yeah, so, and this is for, okay, so, at this time, need the board to authorize the secretary to circulate us? To circulate for lead agency on the projects?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
But we're doing it for all three projects?
Right.
Yes. You made the motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Motion made, say it, one favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, what is the submission deadline for? I looked online, I couldn't even find one. Yeah. Is it typically three weeks before the meeting or?
Actually, today.
Today, for November, today?
Yeah.
How long you been here?
You got time.
Hurry up.
If we were to get the application in by Wednesday, would that be acceptable?
By Friday.
Friday?
Good Friday, okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, you're welcome.
Good night.
Yeah, good night. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is air gas, exterior gas tank storage.
Wayne Nichols from Nichols Builders, I'm here for air gas tonight. We made all the modifications from our last meeting and put them on the plans. We did receive the letter from the planner during, late last week that we did address some issues.
Yeah, you did address most of the, the concerns that needed to be addressed. But the other concern we have is you were supposed to reach out to the fire inspector and kinda review this with him to make sure it was in compliance with the fire code before we made a final approval.
Okay. Not aware if Brian actually did that.
I think last Thursday he had not.
He had not?
Yeah.
I'd have to talk to him about that.
Okay. So, now I think we're kind of at a, kind of a standstill due to the fact that some of the items weren't addressed.
I, I know he had reviewed it early on.
Yeah, I know, I think he did, I think so he needs to?
Yeah.
I, I think he needs to, he did add some things on here, but he needs to properly use the correct codes, the fire code. 'Cause, you know, he's strictly, what he was using was for, was for propane gas. Obviously, there's gonna be other flammable gases there other than propane. There'd be propane, acetylene, I don't know, any methane.
Yeah, it's on the list there, there are some other additional gases in there. So, they, they wanna have all those addressed in the book there, okay.
I think he needs to, I, I think he needs to sit down, have that conversation. It wouldn't be in your best interest and then have the fire inspector review it after the fact. And then he comes back and he finds out, well, you need a twenty-five foot setback from the property line. That's kinda what I, I had mentioned the last time around.
Okay, was there anything else on there though, above and beyond that?
Other than that, that was the only concern that I, I knew of. Obviously, the, the planner, I guess, is, he's not here this evening, but you did receive his letter. And obviously, the majority of the items have been taken care of, there's, you know, the, you changed the, the parking, they just would like you to remove the word compact?
Correct.
From the, from the site plan revision. From the, from the site plan revision. Uh, lighting, there's no proposals to changes in the lighting. And the only other issue is the, the floodplain. Form EAF indicated that line 16, that the project site is within the 100-acre floodplain.
I thought that, uh, didn't he review that with you, Barbara?
He did, and he was gonna open a floodplain permit. I see, he does, though, in his letter to us, uh, that in 2016, a Loma was performed and accepted by FEMA. I would have to check into that.
Okay. So I, I, at worst case, we'd have to fill out the permit for the floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that would be, you know, you just have to have some type of plan on how to contain everything in case of a flood.
Okay.
Either elevate or, you know, enclose, you know, cage it in somehow.
All right. Um, so I think that we could probably do, uh, is there any chance of us pulling that stuff together, beginning on the agenda for the next planning meeting?
We have to look into David Stolman's, uh, comment number three.
Yeah.
About explosive materials.
Well, lighting, lighting's...
Four, okay.
Four.
Do we actually put that, that whole illumination plan on there on the second page?
Well, no, they're talking about, they're talking about number four, that regards to the outdoor storage and materials.
In regard to the floodplain.
Yeah.
I don't have to...
This just came in Friday, so I'm just looking at it now.
Yeah, I just, I, I just looking at it now. But this, I don't have my, I don't have the previous packet from the other meeting. Was that, was that on the previous letter also? Does anybody know? I'm just curious.
It was.
It was on the previous letter?
We can get that looked at within a few days.
Yeah, that wasn't, you know, the critical thing.
Right.
Because the actual sto- I mean, the site itself, when we looked at the floodplain, you know, does touch the property, but it doesn't actually go as far as...
It seems to catch the corner.
Ex- exactly.
Just, I mean, barely.
Yeah.
On the FEMA floodplain.
I didn't look at the, I didn't look at the map on that one.
So I had spoken to Brian, I said, short of doing a whole study on that, it would just be easy to open up a floodplain permit and move forward from there.
Okay. Yeah, I, and I didn't think we had a problem with doing that.
It's just, it's so, it's so tight. You know, we could quibble about it, but it was just easier to tell him to open a permit.
Okay. We, we need to do that prior to the next meeting, or do we, can we do that when we file for our permits, or?
It takes a moment to file for it. Brian could file for it tomorrow, so that should just be done.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I mean, if we get those two items addressed, I mean, we could, you know, the secretary can put you on, you know, when the next available agenda would be.
Okay.
And then we can move forward from there. But the, still need to open, you know, address those two issues.
All right.
Okay.
All right, I'll talk to, I'll speak to Brian when you're done.
And the fire inspector will be in tomorrow, Wednesday, because they have to be down Thursday. So Brian and yourself could reach out to them.
Okay, that would be fine. All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is global business park subdivision and natural green solution site plan, or a conceptual review.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, Bill Povell, we're here tonight, uh, for the applicant global satellite, uh, to talk about a conceptual plan for the property that's at the end of Airport Drive. It's 115 acres. Um, the parcel was part of an overall large piece of property that was developed back in the eighties, um, when the road for Airport Drive was extended into the property. Um, at the time, the intention was to extend the road into this 115 acres, um, but it wasn't because of the, uh, the stream that exists at the end of the existing cul-de-sac now. Um, so in order to develop the 115 acres, um, it's necessary to extend Airport Drive. Um, and that is encompassed by DEC wetland. Um, I'm not sure how many board members remember, but we've been in here quite a number of times for various projects in Airport Drive, including, uh, developing this property. Um, you know, we did have some issues with DEC a few, uh, probably about 10 years ago, um, because they didn't want to have the same width of the Airport Drive, which is a commercial road now, and it's 36 feet. They wanted to keep it narrower. Um, so at the time, they asked us for a site plan, and we weren't ready to do that, um, in order to work with them and getting the permits necessary to extend Airport Drive. So we're at a point now where we had, we do have a project that we're proposing on this property, and in order to do so, we are gonna now, um, look to extend Airport Drive. So 115 acres is outlined in red. Um, the green is the existing Airport Drive, and then the red would be about 600 feet would be extended into the property, and that would cross the stream, uh, which goes in this direction here, and then it would just get past the, uh, 100-foot wetland buffer for DEC, uh, to put a cul-de-sac, and that would give access to the lots that we'd be proposing for the project. And the rail trail is up here, uh, Hackensack Heights is down here. Uh, so tonight, we're again proposing a site plan, um, for natural material, um, just a natural material recycling and processing facility. And that would encompass, this area here, uh, which is above the wetlands. This whole area on this lot, which is, which is proposed, is 82 acres, uh, this wetland. Um, and then there's 19 acres, um, where the actual site's gonna be, that's out of the wetlands and could build a little area, uh, up in this area here. And then there is a property between this lot where we're gonna be building and the rail trail. Uh, I believe that's some of Marty's, uh, property. So this is what the subdivision map looks like. Um, there's an, I think, an easement that, uh, the applicant, an owner conveyed to the county, uh, for a water main that was connected to the county water main, brought down through this property and out to Airport Drive. Um, so that's in this, this area here. So, and I'm sorry, it's eight, this lot is 82 acres and 19 of it is, is dry, so it's about 60, 63 acres are in an area that's encompassed.
It's wetland, a really...
...buffer. There is an upland area in the middle, but you'd have to cross the wetlands to get to it, and we're not proposing to do that.
Okay.
All right, so, you know, again, the goal is to create Lot One for the site plan we're proposing, and then Lot Two would remain vacant for, uh, future potential development, unknown at this time.
Okay.
So, this is the 82-acre parcel I highlighted in red on the subdivision map, and here's the extension of Airport Drive here, to get your bearings. Um, so what we're, we're proposing, um, is a, uh, natural material recycling and processing facility. Um, and that would be in this area here. Uh, there would be a 200 by 100-foot building, and then a yard area where materials will, would be brought there. Um, we've had a lot of interest in the area. Um, there's not a lot of places for people to bring stumps, uh, broken concrete, rock, those types of materials. Um, so with this site plan, we'd be proposing a yard where these materials would be brought. Uh, they'd be processed in this yard, you know, rock and concrete would be, uh, crushed and turned into either stone or gravel, um, to be sold, or like a recycled gravel with the concrete. Um, the stumps would be ground, um, and that, you know, that would be blended in to make topsoil, for example. Um, be able to bring trees and brush that would be chipped and turned into mulch. Uh, and then with this facility, there's a, there's a, like I said, it's a 100 by 200-foot, uh, building, and that would be to support the yard, that would be for, um, the business to work on equipment inside the building. Um, there's another need for truck wash, um, and we'd like to incorporate that inside the building.
Okay.
So the building's large enough, um, that an indoor, uh, truck wash could be, um, installed in the building. Um, and this layout here leaves, you know, a, a lot of access for the, the equipment, the trucks and so forth, to get through the building.
Okay, so you'd get in through all four sides, more or less?
And we did reserve a pretty large area, um, for stormwater management, um, knowing that not only you have the DEC wetlands here, that there's gonna be a lot of materials that are gonna be, uh, brushed and, and, um, processed in the yard. So we did reserve a pretty large area where we'd have a series, series of forbays and settling ponds, um, so that we assure that all the drainage from this, uh, facility, uh, meets all the, the requirements for, uh, stormwater discharge. Um, I just highlighted it in blue, um, in this area. And, you know, this, this area was selected because it's pretty isolated, uh, with the wetlands to the west. Um, it's a vacant parcel back here, and it, this all goes up towards the rail trail, so this whole facility would not be seen by the rail trail at all.
Okay, no visibility from there?
No.
And also the, the houses, right, because you said Hackensack Heights Road?
Hackensack Heights Road, this, well, it might be hard for you to see, but here's, here's the area. So Hackensack Heights Road is down in here.
It's down there, so none of the, none of those parcels back up to that?
No, there's, this, this is a really large wetland, um, and, um, undisturbed area. It used, it used to be more brush, but it's pretty overgrown now. I think we'll say it's become forested. Um, that, that, all that land's gonna be preserved, because this is just a section of that lot, um, on the subdivision map. I'm only showing this part here.
Okay.
So there's another, there's a, um, quite a long distance from even where I left off down to Hackensack Heights, which is down in here.
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying.
Um, and that does have an upland for a mound in the wetland itself, which actually helps, um, you know, with any kind of visibility.
So the adequate squirting between the, the properties?
Right.
Okay.
And then with this particular plan, uh, you know, we're able to build a road. Uh, we have a, a need in, uh, you know, we're gonna provide a need in the area, and then it, uh, leaves room for, you know, the development of Lot Two.
Okay. So in regards to this with the recycling, it's no construction debris?
No.
This is all, it's just gonna be?
It's not gonna be a transfer station.
Brush, tree stumps, and concrete?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, uh, Bill, I think you also had, uh, uh, did I see, uh, mulch or mulch piles?
Yeah, we're, with this yard, we're proposing storage bins, so when, when the material going in, and whatever's processed, if we end up with wood chips, we have an area for wood chips or mulch. Uh, this, uh, I'm calling it, it's like, uh, item four, but it's like recycled item four that would be, be made with the broken up stone and concrete.
Yeah.
You know, when you grind up stumps, you end up with a lot of topsoil, you know, so that, you know, those types of materials will be created, and they'll all be stored in these bins.
And all the, all the processing will be outdoors, correct?
Correct, in the yard.
Yeah.
You know, and I just, I showed a pressure on here, you know, screener. There'll be, there'll be equipment in the, in the yard to do this. Um, we did not grade this yet, but, um, I did take a look at the, the grading when I laid this out, and I anticipate that, for example, uh, the elevation up in here is two, uh, 290 to 300.
Okay.
And the elevation of this yard is gonna be down at like 260, 270, so it's gonna be 30 to 40 feet lower than the top of the hill that's completely forested.
You mentioned like the, um, the stumps and everything. How far, I mean, where's it all coming from originally? How far away is it being shipped from to us?
That, it could, could come from anywhere. It could come from anywhere, but the, you know, we, we cut a lot...
I'd just be looking at, you know, the bugs and the critters that come in stumps.
Yeah. But, uh...
That's why we can't even move it across the river.
Yeah, no, I know, that's, uh...
Well, that's, that's the DEC's problem, though, right?
Well, this, this would require a permit from the DEC to operate, correct?
Right.
I believe so, yeah.
So you can't bring stuff from northern New York and down to here, from Westchester up to there?
Yeah, we haven't, you know, it's, the extent of how far it was brought in, that's still something that we're, you know, evaluating.
Now, is this gonna be opened up to the public to bring the material into this place, or is there a fee involved if they want to bring concrete and stumps and leaves or whatever you take?
There would be, there would be a fee.
There's a fee?
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna, this is gonna be a full retail, because you're gonna be selling this stuff too, correct?
Correct.
Are you delivering it? You're gonna have tractor trailers coming in and out all day? How you gonna, how is this gonna work?
Well, there will be trucks coming in and out during business hours to drop materials off, and then also for deliveries going out.
Oh, but will, is there opportunities for contractors to come in and purchase materials?
Yes.
Or this is just all delivery?
Well, we'd like to keep the options open, so, um, you know, there would, you know, we would treat this as a contractor's yard, where somebody can come in and, and buy, buy their materials.
So are you gonna leave dumpsters on property and have people fill them, and you're gonna pick them up and bring them here and separate that?
For the most part, if some, it's, the answer to that is yes, but for the most part, uh, it is anticipated that, um, for example, if, uh, somebody's clearing a five-acre lot and they have a whole stack of, uh, stumps, that that would all come in together. Um, if somebody's, uh, demoing, you know, a foundation and there's some concrete or a road, um, that's mixed in with the excavation, that would come in.
They do asphalt there too, then?
Uh, yes, that's the intention, yep.
So you're gonna have a wash plant there as well to wash off the material?
Um, that's something we're looking into right now, but it is something that...
So you're gonna need a settlement pond as well, correct?
Right. Well, that's, that's, that's why we propose this large area here, that we would have a settlement.
So are you gonna dredge that every so often?
It's gonna have to be, yes, it's gonna have to be cleaned up every so often, yep.
Are you gonna be delivering the material?
I'm sorry?
You guys gonna be delivering the material?
The intention right now is to have the ability to do that, yes.
How you gonna process the...
I think deliveries would, would actually be more common than somebody coming in there to buy it.
How you gonna process the topsoil there? Are you gonna manufacture it? How are you going to process the topsoil there? Are you going to manufacture it? Topsoil?
Yeah.
You're going to make topsoil there?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the intention.
So, you need a lot of room for that. How about the smell from the decaying wood and stuff like that? How are you going to control that?
That's, that'd be, have to be something I have to look into, like.
Because I, I, I know about this a lot, because when you start piling up wood chips and debris, it does let off a pretty good odor that travels quite a ways. And if that development, you might be able to pick that up, are you going to be able to control that? Are you going to keep it wet? What's this, what's, how are you going to do that?
I doubt I can answer right now, that's something I do have to look more into.
Because, I mean, in the village of Fishgill, there's a problem with one of the facilities there that manufactures soil, and that's a concern, because it does let off a pretty foul odor, especially when it's extremely hot out.
Okay.
So, Bruce, this is almost like a recycle depot.
It's a recycle depot is exactly what he's got.
The only thing is, they take, I believe that they take in, you know, construction debris, and, you know, you're saying that they're not going to take in construction debris?
We're not planning on that, no.
As long as it's not for, yeah, as long as it's not for construction debris, I mean, I don't see any issue with it. You know, it's not going to become a sorting facility like recycle depot or some of the other ones that are out there. Yeah, as long as it's not for that, I mean, I don't see an issue. Right, you're bringing in stuff to be, stuff to be processed, to be resold, so.
Does this, does this outfit have other, you know, facilities, Bill, or?
No, this, this is, this would be a startup.
Startup?
Yep.
So, are you going to manufacture landscape mulch there too?
That's something we're looking into right now, but I do, I do need to get further into that, but it's something that we would like to do with the facility, yes.
Then you get the dyes and?
Yeah, I gotta look more into that. We really just want to get this, you know, get, get this out in front of you to get these questions, which will help us put the, you know.
Oh, do we have a need to know what his future plans are, so we can prepare for that? Like, like the dye plant for the, for the mulch and stuff?
Well, we need to get, when they make an application, they're going to need to provide a complete narrative, you know, on what, on what, you know, the operation.
And do they have to notify us when they start doing these different processes?
Well, the use has to fit into whatever permitted use is, or use approved by this board.
Okay.
If they add a use, they have to come back to you.
Right, if they amend the use, change the use, they would have to come back.
Well, we'd have to check on that, that's another thing we've got to check on, to see that they're.
It's an enforcement issue, absolutely.
But this does, as far as I read it, this does fall under the permitted uses in the airport.
Under permitted uses in that area.
Yes.
What did the DEC say about the extension of the road? They don't have an issue with it? Well, I'm sure they're not.
We reached a point with them the last time that they, because we were more or less proposing the subdivision, because we had a lot of interest in the property, but nobody wanted to go through the expense of extending the road. And we reached a point with the DEC where they said, well, we need a hard project in order to allow you to extend the road. And we had a, we had a couple of projects that were, were getting ready to go, but they ended up falling through, so then we ended up stopping the process with DEC, because we didn't want to come in with a full site plan, not really knowing what we wanted to do. But we've had a lot of interest, you know, in the property for this, you know, we started thinking about it, and we do want to go ahead with this, and start it up, and in all likelihood, we'll bring, bring in a contractor to work with us on it.
So, you're going to have scales set up, you're going to be selling this stuff by the ton, correct?
We did think about that, but right now, we're, we're looking more at, you know, pricing it for.
By the yard.
By the yard.
So, you got traffic management figured in there?
Yeah, yep. You know, one of the things you can see is we did keep the main road going towards the yard, and I did show like a yard master booth, so we'll be able to control people coming in and controlling them out, you know, without actually going into the parking lot, but we will have an office, you know, in the building on the front there.
People could come in and pick up materials, go in and out without having to go into the main building.
Right.
How does everybody feel with this, the concept of this?
Yeah, we'll see particulars on the bridge or however they get down the stream later, right?
Yeah, we had, that, that was actually already designed, so I'm going to pick up where I left off with that, but.
Ten years ago designed, or?
Yeah, but it was based on the, the stream flows really haven't changed all that much. I do have to check, because it's a pretty large drainage area. And when we sized the flow for the stream, we took a look at the entire area and applied, you know, engineering. What's the word I'm looking for? But we did use the engineering protocol to, just to come up with the area and estimate the runoff based on the land usage. And I believe, I have to double check, but off the top of my head, the culvert size that we came up for this was, I think, 1.25, one and a quarter times bigger than the culvert downstream that goes under 376. So, we felt like we had a lot of safety built into it from flooding. And it was, I believe, it was, we had two, we had a main culvert where the, the stream primarily went through, and then there was a second one, which came into play when you hit flooding conditions. And it had a natural bottom, because DEC, because it's a classified stream, we need to maintain a natural bottom.
Maintain a natural bottom, okay.
So, that, so we had a natural bottom.
All right, anybody else have any? Yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're looking to go forward with it, then, you know, I guess make a full submission. If they're going to go forward, I guess you need to make a full submission for the, for the project.
We really wanted to come here and.
Yeah.
Get some feedback, so it helps us put the application together, so we don't waste time.
Yeah, 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 it's just, as long as, you know, we, you know, most of the stuff, the screening for many neighboring properties, if, you know, if it, if it comes into play, but it sounds like you have enough elevation to, to do so, to not worry about it, but.
Yeah, we're really confident with the location that we selected for this, because there's a lot of natural features that really do screen this area from the surrounding property. And plus, it's, you know, it's in the correct zone.
How far away are you from that development?
Hackensack Heights?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got the bottom.
Down the bottom, down to the 80 acres.
I'm going to say, you know, just looking at the scale of the map, we got to be about 1,500 to 2,000 feet from the back of that, the closest parcel.
Yeah, it's a good distance.
So, just under a half a mile.
Sounds like a good idea to me, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, as long as they just address the concerns, I guess, we discussed this evening. Include it in the submission, and we can move forward from there.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, one more item on the agenda this evening. We have an extension for, extension request for Eduardo Loria Luxury Apartments. They're seeking a one-year extension on the site plan application. Looking for retroactive approval back from April 7th, 2020, through April 6th, 2021. This is the project at 102 Old Post Road. So, with the final approvals again, this always comes up, is it a, we can give a one-year extension on these?
It's a site plan.
Okay, so it's a site plan?
Site plan, and he was hung up for a long time with the town board, getting the water and sewer extensions.
Right, trying to, to extend down to their, between their and a neighboring property.
People speak to that better.
Okay, all right, I just didn't know, I remember in the past, we had concerns that were brought up, because it would only be done in six-month intervals.
That's for a subdivision.
Uh, that's subdivision, okay. All right, so being, uh, need a motion to approve this for the one-year extension?
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. All right, with that, is there any other business we need to discuss this evening? All right, seeing as there's none.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.